He has maintained the department's accreditation through the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, pretty much since he got here, if I remember correctly. He has overseen a team of 39 sworn officers, serving our community of approximately 33,000 residents. He's the former chairman of the Bucks County SWAT team. He's participated in the early years of the Action News Crime Fighters Report in the 1980s. Chief, I saw some photos from those days. I like the hair. Yeah? Don't know where it went, but I like it. He's the co-founder of the Pennsylvania Homicide Investigators Association in 1992, which provides education and training for prosecutors, medical personnel, and law enforcement agencies. He was granted the Department of Justice Secret Security Clearance in 2004. He serves as the chief of police in Lower Makefield Township for 24 years, as I said, retiring after 48 years of serving us in law enforcement. Those are the man's bona fides, which are impressive enough and why a lot of public officials are here tonight to recognize you formally. But really, what's really packing the house tonight is what you've done in the community for people personally, whether it's as the chief of police or just your resident here and all the people that you've affected over time. And that's why we're all here for you tonight, Chief. You know, always a little personal anecdote. I've been a supervisor now, what am I, going on eight years? My first, when I was sworn in, I had a daughter who was just three years old and one who was less than a year old. At the swearing-in night, there were people, not as many people here tonight, but my kids were very nervous. We were sitting in the back with my wife. My youngest was in the baby carrier. And Chief came back, came back in the back row, got down on one knee, was playing with my three-year-old, saying, you know, "coochie coo" to my not-quite-one-year-old, and he pulled out some patches for Lower Makefield Police. That set them at ease, made the night go really well, and it's been like that ever since. So we appreciate that. I appreciate you personally, all the things you've done for me over the years, and I think the rest of the board does, too. I'm not going to turn this into a long speech by any means, because we have a lot of people that are better at that than I am. So with that, the board and the township first would like to bring you up here and recognize you officially for all your years of service. If the board could meet me down at the bottom here?
Before the chairman speaks, I'm glad that this isn't a roast, because a lot of people here know a lot of things about me.
So here, I'll let you hold this. So we gave you, want to signify something majestic, just like you. So we got you a nice, beautiful eagle. So on the back here, it says, "Presented by the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors on behalf of the community on January 15, 2025." Just that. Chief Kaluzi, here's your eagle, and thank you so much for your years of service.
That's very nice. I don't know what to say. I'm moved. I just want to thank the board for allowing us the time tonight and for your presentation, and I'm very grateful. And to you, Mr. Chairman, congratulations on your chairmanship, and I wish you great luck this year. Okay? All right. Dave?
The deal on the roast, though, is as they come on.
All right. Now, I should have mentioned this earlier. There were programs by the door, so we're going to follow the order of the program here. So next up will be our esteemed senator from the 10th District, Senator Steve Sanacero. Welcome, sir.
Ken, I think many of us in the political realm should take some lessons for you on public speaking. Brevity is a lost art. I will not be brief. No, I will be relatively brief. You know, it's hard to believe that 2000 was already 24 years ago. And a lot has happened in this community in those 24 years. Soon after you took the helm of the police department, our country experienced the worst terrorist attack in its history. A terrorist attack that hit us here at home in a very personal way, and in a very unique way among the communities in our area. We had three, in very short order, catastrophic floods and a number of other flooding events that caused damage throughout our township and our neighboring municipalities, including Yardley Borough. We had two hurricanes, that you might remember, that caused widespread damage to homes and commercial enterprises, and indeed widespread power outages that caused real hardship for the people of our area. We had continued growth, development, both residential and commercial, that continued to transform this town from the once sleepy rural community that it was not too long ago to a large suburban town of over 33,000 souls. And in recent years, we have had a society that regrettably has been marked at times by a coarsening of our public discourse that has made the work of our police, of our first responders, and of our elected officials more challenging. But through it all, Ken Kaluzi has been a rock of constancy here in Lower Makefield Township. His tenure has been marked by both professionalism and compassion, and a clear-eyed devotion to duty, a duty to the people of this town, to keep them safe and to keep our town thriving. The outpouring of support here tonight, evidenced by everyone here, all the members of the public, many first responders, police officers from Lower Makefield and other towns, our elected officials, representatives from the federal, county, and state levels, are all a testament to that service, and also a sign of gratitude for what you have done. Indeed, the addition of some of our former supervisors as well is a mark of that, and I would like to ask them if they would join me at the podium now. We are grateful to have Scott Fagley, who was actually on the board that made the great decision back in October of 2020 of hiring Ken. Come on up. 2000, excuse me. I believe Matt Maloney was going to try to call in. I think Dobby Dobson is on the line. We have Kristen Tyler. Kristen, come on up. We have Judy Reese, Colin Coyle, and I don't know if I've seen anyone else who has served on the board. But their presence here tonight is, in addition to the current Board of Supervisors, and I should add myself, because I, too, was on this board, is a testament to what Ken Kaluzi has meant to this community. And I'm grateful that all of you are here with us as well. And although we all wanted this day to be far off in the future, after 24 years of faithful service to this community, as Dan Grenier noted, and a distinguished career in Philadelphia before that, I think we can grudgingly say that you deserve this retirement. And we are happy that you and Karen are staying local and that you will not be strangers. But it is appropriate for us to take this time tonight and pause and thank you. Thank you for all that you've done. I, too, have some personal stories, but I'll save those for later at Rosa Bianca. But you've made a difference. And all of us strive to have legacies in our various jobs, that at the end of the day we can look back and say that we've really impacted lives and we've made the world a better place than how we found it. And Ken, you can definitely say that, and I know you've got many years ahead of continuing to have an impact, and I'm grateful for that. But we are very grateful for what you've done for our community. So I have with me a citation from the Pennsylvania State Senate that I'm going to present in a moment. I want to call representatives of two of my colleagues to come up as well. John Kelly, representing Congressman Fitzpatrick, and Emily Fisher, representing Representative Warren. Congressman Fitzpatrick is, of course, down in Washington, where they are in session right now, and Perry Warren, our state representative, is at a public meeting in Hershey that he could not break away from. And they both send their congratulations and their gratitude for your service. So I have a citation from the Pennsylvania State Senate. Emily has one from the Pennsylvania State House. John has a flag of our country, excuse me, that has flown over the U.S. Capitol in your honor. And I have a flag of the Commonwealth that Perry and I have flown over the Pennsylvania State Capitol in your honor as well. And I want to say, if you guys get a chance, and you're a beautiful family as well, to come out to Harrisburg, Perry and I would be happy to take you on a personal tour, bring you on the floor of the Senate and the House. I'm sure Brian Fitzpatrick would be happy to do the same in Washington. Since he's not here, I will say our Capitol is much prettier. But both would be, obviously, an honor on all of our parts if you could make it, and we would love to have you guys there. So with that, I am going to make this presentation, and again, join with the board and everyone here tonight by simply saying, "Thank you."
Why don't we, Rose, why don't we just move this? It will get us all. You got it?
We had a good time together, and we became friends, and I'm glad that you could make it, and I'm glad that we're still friends after all these years. As far as Senator Sanacero, first of all, I want to thank him, Rose, his lovely wife, Ronnie, for the presentations and for helping out tonight. But I want to say that Steve came on this board, I believe it was around 2003, and we became friends, and I'm glad and happy to say that we remain friends after all these years. And I value that, and thank you very much.
We also have with us tonight Diane Marsaglia, our Bucks County Commissioner. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be here in what was my hometown, so it makes it even more fun to be here. I am here on behalf of the county commissioners. You are welcome to come for a tour. It's not as beautiful, but we're a lot more fun. We will make you laugh. I also am here on their behalf to try to get you to stay, but just in case you wouldn't agree to do it, I did want to say what an honor it has been to know you. It's been an honor to serve with you on Health Council. It has been my joy to have you bring the co-responders here to Lower Makefield. And I know that you and I have both had things we've had to face in life that have kept us humble, but the part of that is that you have also shown that to your community. And I know that because my family lived here, and the way you and your officers treated my parents as they aged, and my brother, is exactly what you want a leader to be. And I know that kindness, as well as the ability to enforce the law, is there with all of your officers. So thank you. We will be missed. I do want to read just two parts of this commendation from the commissioners. The first is that, "Whereas since coming to Lower Makefield, Chief Kaluzi has overseen a changing police department that, under his leadership, restructured and expanded its roster, achieved accreditation, and helped popularize the lifesaving overdose-reversing drug, Naxalone, among public servants." And so now, therefore, do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, Robert Harvey Chair, Diane Marsaglia, and Deidra Almo proclaim January 15, 2025, as Chief Kenneth Kaluzi Day throughout the county of Bucks. See? We're fun! We're much more fun! And spoiler alert, this is a county Commissioner tile that we have decided to give to you. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Marsaglia, and please extend my thanks to all the other commissioners.
It is better than the Kaluzi Cobb salad.
Right, the Cobb salad.
Next up on our program is the Bucks County District Attorney, Jennifer Shorn.
Oh, this is a tough one. So as a young woman, Bucks County-born but living in the city of Philadelphia, trying to figure out the next steps for me, knowing I wanted to pursue a career advocating for victims, I would religiously watch the news, and the face I saw was this man. He was the face of reassuring the public that they are safe. He was the face that represented a champion for victims. I remember, at the time, being an athlete and afraid to run in the city of Philadelphia, but, you know, literally, Commander Kaluzi and his team caught the Center City rapist. He was responsible for some of the most notorious homicide investigations and subsequent prosecutions the city has ever seen. And to know that this was a career path I thought I wanted to pursue and see this man and think, wow, you know, he's a giant. And then to think, little old Bucks County gets Chief Kaluzi in Lower Makefield. Now, I was a junior prosecutor, and I knew I wasn't going to get to work with Chief Kaluzi, but I loved the job and kept working at it and, you know, getting promoted through the ranks, and lo and behold, one of the most memorable parts of my career has been getting to work with you. Unfortunately, it's towards the last chapter of your career in law enforcement, but you made such an impact. I know in the little time we had to work together on my career, but look around here, and how many careers have you shaped? How many victims have you championed their cause and got justice for? How many people who struggle with substance abuse, whose lives you saved by bringing Narcan to Bucks County? The list goes on and on and on. And so to be asked to speak here tonight in your honor and see your family, and they need to know, and I'm sure they do, that you are truly a giant among us still to this day, but yet you have this rare, remarkable quality of humility. And it is such, you are a gem. To have that is unbelievable. So I'm going to miss you. I am grateful that I have this friendship, and I look forward to having a drink down the shore when you're retiring. Please, I know we already spoke about that, we're making those arrangements, but truly, it's an honor, and I'm going to miss you, my friend, and I know the fact that I get to call you, my friend, is a true honor.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And with her is the Chief of the County Detectives, Greg Beiler, and also Ed Luca II in the DA's office, and my dear friend and former DA and now Judge Matt Weintraub. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
I believe we have former Township Supervisor Dobby Dobson on the line, who would like to speak a few words. Pull him up.
Yes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to allow me to participate tonight's celebration for Chief Ken Kaluzi. And I wish I could be there in person, but unfortunately, I'm away on business. But Kenny, I don't know if you remember when we met, but it was about 20-some years ago. But you and I really got a chance to know one another back in 2011, when I became a member of the Board of Supervisors. What I quickly admired about you was your professionalism and your dedication to the job and to the citizens of our township. You and the police department worked tirelessly in helping keep Lower Makefield safe. Your extreme knowledge, diligence, and level-headed leadership was consistently on display. I never saw you lose your cool, and I thought that was a big thing for you. And one thing I really admired, and one example I'd like to bring up is when Superstorm Sandy hit our township back in, what was it, late October 2012, I think approximately 85% of our township lost power, and you and your leadership helped on our road to helping us recover. And, you know, with the lights not on, you know, that can cause a lot of problems, and, you know, just being able to lead your department and keep us safe was a big job back then. Webster defines a leader as a person who has the ability to guide or direct a group, and I think that absolutely describes you to a T in the way you led our police department. In closing, Ken, I want to wish you all the best in your retirement. You truly are a man of great character, and I am honored to have worked with you and to be your friend. I never gave you an order when I was on the Board of Supervisors, but tonight I got to give you one, and that's go and enjoy your retirement. Thank you, and God bless you and your family.
Thank you, Dobby. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and your friendship was my honor. Thank you.
Next up, we have Agent Josh Reed from the Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Thank you. Like they said, my name's Josh Reed. I'm Special Agent with the FBI, part of the Philadelphia Division. I work out of Fort Washington. I'm not a supervisor, not part of management. I am the most senior agent in our office, and I think it's appropriate that I'm here tonight. And I think, you know, everybody here who works cases know agents get things done, cops get things done, detectives get things done. And kind of the unsung hero in some of that is really the chief allowing one of his detectives, a group of his officers, to assist us. And they don't do it looking for any notoriety, to be part of anything, you know, get anything out of it. They do it to help us. And it's kind of an unsung hero-type thing for, you know, specifically, we've had a Lower Makefield detective as a task force officer in our office for many, many years. And it is with great thanks that you allow that, because we recognize that as a valuable resource for you to let work with us. And I say this with all sincerity, we don't take that for granted, and it's important. So with that, brevity is also on my side. What we have is, we have a letter recognizing the chief's 48 years of law enforcement experience signed by the FBI Director, and we have a plaque or picture, "Philadelphia," and all things for Philadelphia Division. There's always the Liberty Bell, just acknowledging our appreciation for years of service.
Throughout my years in law enforcement, I had the pleasure of working on many FBI task forces over the years, and you can't find a more professional, more dedicated group of individuals. But I would just like to say that this presentation has a little special meaning. If you, with your permission, for those who don't know, in 1996, on the Philadelphia waterfront, and I remember it like it was yesterday, an FBI agent working undercover, making a drug deal from a notorious drug dealer in Philadelphia, got involved in a shootout with that drug dealer, and he was shot and killed in a hotel parking lot. And that individual was Chuck Reed, Josh's dad. So this means an awful lot to me, this presentation. It means an awful lot that Josh presented it to me, and I'd like everybody not to honor me, but to give him a round of applause.
I believe we're going to call an audible on this one. I believe former Supervisor Matt Maloney is also on the line and would like to speak a few words. Bring him up.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. And thank you to Senator Sanacero for letting me know this was going on. Far enough away in a different part of the country now that I wouldn't have even known it, but excited at the opportunity, Ken, to recognize you. We served together for four years. I was elected to the board in 2007, and much as I've heard others remark, I was a lifelong Bucks County and Lower Makefield, and spent the first 30 years of my life there, and it was a special experience to get to serve on the board. It was especially, a special experience to get to serve with someone as professional as Ken. Town's losing a great resource, a great chief, a great everything in having you retire, Ken, but to have had you for these 24 years is something special. So thank you for everything you gave to this community, from one long-term resident to the other. Just thank you. And thanks again for giving me a chance to say something. Ken, good luck.
Thank you very much, Matt. Great to hear from you, and all the best, and our time together was too short, and I do miss it. Take care.
Next up, I'd like to call Chief Joseph Barterella, the President of the Police Chiefs Association of Bucks County.
I have a brief, prepared speech on behalf of the Chiefs Association, and I just want to share some, you know, personal words for Ken. So I'll say, "Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to stand before you tonight to celebrate the incredible career of Chief Ken Kaluzi, a man whose leadership, professionalism, and calm demeanor have been a guiding force in law enforcement for decades. As President of the Police Chiefs Association of Bucks County, I want to express our deepest gratitude for Ken's 24 years of service as chief of the Lower Makefield Police Department. During his time on our association's executive board, Ken was the consummate professional, a calming voice of reason, and a trusted leader." He also served with distinction as Bucks County's representative on the Five County Task Force, a role for which there truly was no better candidate. So Ken, on behalf of the Association, I'm proud to present you with this retirement gift as a symbol of our appreciation. This is from the Chiefs Association Executive Board. So now I'm just gonna put the speech away, just say a few quick words. I'm gonna switch hats as Chief of the Middletown Township Police Department, the neighbor to the south, second-best police department after Lower Makefield, of course, in the county. So I remember about 10 and a half years ago, I had applied for Middletown, and I was offered my first, you know, contract draft. And for those of you who know, those chiefs in the room, that first contract is the, you know, the contract where you're gonna make, like, as a chief, that dreaded first contract, where they wanna pay you less than a rookie cop and give you like a '96 Honda Accord as your take-home car. So, so anyway, several chiefs in the county were really good, reached out to me, all retired, you know, Bill Wilcox, Billy Wegman, Rick Pasquale, you always be grateful, but, you know, I got that initial contract, and I got a call from someone from our old department in Philly, and they simply said, "Go see Ken." So off I went to Lower Makefield. Never had been in the building before, and you know, you walk in and you get screened, and finally they say, you know, "Chief Kaloozy will see you." And you go in that room and it's nostalgic with the wood and the paneling and the conference table right in the center. So I sit down and I'm nervous. I really had never met Ken, you know, I kinda knew him, but I never really met him before. And he comes in and he says, you know, "Joe, have a seat." So I, you know, I sit down at the conference table, and he says, "Joe, listen, I'm gonna introduce you to a friend of mine, I think he's here tonight, Terry Fedorcheck, our Township Manager. All right, Terry and I are gonna look over your contract, and I want you to do everything Terry tells you, okay, buddy?" You know, he tells you that. "Okay, buddy?" And he puts the hand on his shoulder, right, like, "At." So I'm like, "Yeah, all right, that sounds great." So anyway, you know, I sat down with both of them. I'm forever grateful, because that was kind of my first experience in Bucks County, and because of that, kind of springboarded me, I had a little more confidence in my first contract. And I'm not one that seeks out advice all that much, which is to my detriment, but I will say this, in my 10 years, whenever I needed guidance and advice on anything, and Ken will tell you this, he would always get a text, "Ken, can I give you a call, please?" And he would always say, "Give me a call." And I would call him, and I would be upset, and I'd be, like, pacing in my office, and he would always be like, "Joe, I need you to calm down, buddy, okay? I need you to calm down. All right, if you do what you say you're gonna do, they're gonna get mad at you, this is what I want you to do." So, and every time I listened to him, it always worked out, and every time I didn't, it never worked out. So, anyway, but there is definitely mutual respect between our departments. Lower Makefield has a great Police Department with great leadership. So, Ken, this is to you from the Middletown Township Police Department, and this says, "Presented to Lower Makefield Township Police Chief Kenneth Kaloozy. Congratulations on your retirement after 24 years of honorable service to Lower Makefield Township from the men and women of the Middletown Township Police Department."
That was a good mob impression of me, too. I appreciate it. Oh, my. Joe is a wonderful chief for Middletown, he's a consummate professional, and so are all the chiefs in Bucks County, and it was just an honor of mine and a distinct pleasure to get to know and work with each one of them. And as far as advice, we all give each other advice from time to time, and we thank, we're thankful that we have each other. And there's so many departments that are represented here, Middletown Township, Newtown Township, Chief John Hearn, and if I forget anybody, please, don't get mad at me, our Bucks County Chiefs Association attorneys, I see his face out there hiding in the back, he's afraid somebody's gonna ask him a question about counselors. And the Ben Sahin Police Department, Director McVeigh, and Bill, and geez, and I'm sorry, but I can't think of everybody, I'm just so overwhelmed. And Yardley Borough, Joe, Joe Kelly, hey, Joe, thank you for being here. And Joe Fioka, thank you, Joe. And Jim Sabbath from Newtown Borough, thanks, Jimmy. I just want to be able to thank everybody, but probably later on I'll get a chance to say everybody, and talk to them and thank them. But I appreciate everybody being here tonight. Oh, and Chris McAtier, we talked about the County Detectives, Chris is a former Chief of County Detectives for Bucks County. He's right out there hiding behind Chief, Deputy Chief Lewis. Yeah, so, well, thank you very much, everybody, and thanks for the Chiefs Association for your presentation and your present. Thank you. Appreciate it. Much appreciated.
All right, next up, we're gonna bring a little closer to home. We're not done yet, chief. The Yardley Makefield Fire Company would like to say a few words.
Good to see you, Ken. Hi, I'm Larry Newman, I'm the President of the Yardley Makefield Fire Company, up here with Chief Glenn Chamberlain. Glenn and I have been around a long time, and Ken, we were here, you know, right from the start with you, and I can't tell you how much the Association has been, it's been great for both of us. We really appreciate everything you've helped us with and the fact that your men were out there helping us on our fire scenes and accidents that we would have. We've heard many accolades tonight, and you certainly deserve all of them. So keeping this short and sweet, we'd like to present you with this plaque. It says, "Presented to Kenneth D. Kaloozy in grateful appreciation for your many years of service and supporting the Yardley Makefield Fire Company in many aspects of public safety provided to the businesses and residents of Lower Makefield Township. Presented by the Yardley Makefield Fire Company." So Ken, congratulations.
Oh, get a picture. And in addition to thanking the chief, Larry, and our fire director, our fire services person, his son, Chamberlain, Tim Chamberlain, I want to thank all of Yardley Makefield's finest for being here today and coming out in the cold to be here for me. I appreciate it, gentlemen, and I'm honored that you came out. Thank you so much.
It's nice to see the Fire Department and the Police Department getting along. And of course, we have to have Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Robert Lewis of Lower Makefield Township Police Department.
Chief, I have the privilege tonight to present you with letters of recognition from two other federal agencies. The first is from the United States Secret Service, and the letter reads as follows. "To Chief Ken Kaloozy, it is an honor to extend our heartfelt congratulations on your retirement. Honoring your 48 years of excellent service and dedication to public service is a true testament to your legacy of hard work and commitment you leave behind. You received numerous commendations, including the prestigious award for bravery. You have led the Lower Makefield Police Department for 24 years, provided the community with a respectful and reliable Police Department. Chief Kaloozy, your personal and professional leadership and contributions to the community have been exemplary. You are a true professional who leads by example and exemplifies that excellence is something to aim for daily. You inspire everyone around you to achieve more, and I know that that will only continue in your retirement. You have been an incredible leader, and we wish you all the best as you embark on this new chapter in your life as you celebrate your retirement. Sincerely, Timothy M. Jordan, Deputy Special Agent in Charge of the United States Secret Service." Cut to each one. The second is from the United States Marshal Service, and that letter reads as follows. "Chief Kaloozy, on behalf of the United States Marshal Service, I wanted to thank you for your 48 years of dedicated law enforcement service to our great nation. The outward expression of your leadership throughout these decades of service has been quite simply excellence in all that you do. The impacts of your exceptional service have been profound, both in keeping our community safe and in terms of building enduring capabilities. As one of the original Philadelphia Police Department members of the United States Marshal Service Violent Crimes Fugitive Task Force, you helped charter the course for a capability that has averaged over 1,000 arrests of dangerous persons per year since its inception in 1993. Your leadership during Operation Gunsmoke helped set the stage for future violent suppression, violent suppression operations that have met with similarly exceptional results. Of highest importance, your effort on this federal task force conferred proof of concept to a capability that has been reflected nationally and remains key in deterring violence targeting communities we serve. Your leadership and service will be missed, but your legacy will live on. Again, thank you for your leadership and dedication to the law enforcement mission. Sincerely, Eric S. Gartner, United States Marshal." And then lastly, "On behalf of the men and women of the Lower Makefield Township Police Department, I'd like to personally thank you for your 24 years of dedicated and distinguished service to the community. You led the department not only with pride and professionalism, but with kindness and compassion as well. Your list of accomplishments and milestones are lengthy and too lengthy to list. Your 48-year commitment and contribution to law enforcement, to the law enforcement profession is nothing short of remarkable, and I can say with certainty you've had a positive impact on the lives and well-being of numerous citizens and officers alike. Your vision, leadership, and guidance have left an indelible mark not only on the department, but on all those that have served under your command. As you embark on this new chapter of your life and begin retirement, it is our sincere wish that your days are filled with health and happiness. Congratulations, boss."
So, a lot of nice things were said tonight about me and about everything that I accomplished. But all of you know that none of that could have happened if it wasn't for a deputy chief, a captain, a lieutenant, command staff, that I had worked to work with and that were supportive and loyal and very professional, as well as every member of the Lower Makefield Police Department, who I will miss dearly, but I know will carry on the same pride and the same dedication as they had for the last 24 years. And I want to thank every one of them for everything that they've done for me and for this community. I also like to thank all the residents of this community for, over the last three weeks, that sent text messages, phone calls, cards, and emails for my retirement. It meant a lot to me, it was a distinct pleasure, and I was grateful to have had the honor to serve the residents of this community. And anytime anyone, my phone number's the same, don't ever hesitate, I might not have the authority to do anything anymore, but I could sure talk to you, and I would look forward to that very much. Some people I didn't mention are my dear friends, two of which served with me for, in the Philadelphia Police Department and came in the academy with me, Joe Kelly and Tony Melfi. If you guys would stand up, please. Stand up, Tony. And Joe, and they're here with their lovely wives, along with Bernie, my dear friend for many years, and his lovely wife, Pat, Ed Dowd, Matt, Mary, and everyone, thank you so much for coming out, I really appreciate it. And Jimmy, Jimmy Benz. Jimmy, would you stand up, please? Jimmy Benz is a true hero. He's a hero because he does everything he can in his power every day to think about those that suffered tragedy as a law enforcement officer, as a federal agent. And he was the person who implemented the Hero Plaque Program, which places a plaque of every police officer in the city of Philadelphia that was killed in the line of duty at the location that they were killed. He also does the Holiday Meals for Heroes, where we, which we attend every year at Thanksgiving and Christmas, where he provides full, and I mean a full, meal to all the families of slain officers. I'm proud to call Jimmy my dear friend, and you might recognize it because he was in two Rocky movies. He was, I believe he was the attorney for Sylvester Stallone in one of the movies, and he was the Commissioner of Boxing in the other movies, if I'm not correct. And Jim and I have been friends for a long, long time. He's a great individual, and he does nothing but give back to his community and to people. And I'm really proud that he's here tonight. Former managers, Terry, your name was mentioned? Long time, Terry, you and I, pal. Long time. Very long time. Thank you for being here, Terry, it means a lot. All good. And Kurt, Kurt Ferguson, thank you so much for coming out. Really appreciate that. My time with you was great, too short but great. And Judy and everybody else, and anybody I forgot, please forgive me. I see Keith here, Pat Pladson and Pat Pladson. And who else did I miss? Steve, Steve Gershman, Steve's my unofficial attorney. Yeah, and I'm his unofficial contractor. He calls me up when he has a house repair, and I call him up when I have a legal matter. Thanks, Steve, for being here. Appreciate it. Andy, thank you so much for coming out. I appreciate it, it was great to see you tonight, it means a lot to me. And last but not least, my beautiful love wife, Karen. Karen, if you can come up, please. Karen, her support, none of this could be possible without her support and her guidance throughout the years, and her love throughout the years, and I thank you very much for everything. And my beautiful children, would you please stand? Would you come in the room, please? Come in. Please stand. And the other ones that are too shy and are standing outside, thank you all very much. And some of my 13 grandchildren are here, in the front row, and one of them had to be taken out, I guess, so, I don't know why. They're allowed to do whatever they want, they don't have to be taken out. Okay, and thank you all for your support over the years. My kids lived it with me each year. In Philadelphia, I would come home, as Jen said, and they would say, "Dad, what was that story you saw?" And I couldn't tell half of what the story was, and I would make something nice up. "Oh, yeah, we saw you on TV. What happened to that person that got killed?" "Ah, that's nothing, don't worry about that." You know, but they were always very interested in, that they had to deal with all their friends in school all the years in Philadelphia. But I appreciate everything, I appreciate your support, your love, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you. And that's enough. One more, one more. We talked about the Yardley Makefield's finest, but we have Yardley Makefield Rescue Squad here also, and they're awesome, they're tremendous. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. And please, don't get mad at me if I missed anybody. Thanks. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
You good?
Almost. Don't worry, no one's going to jump out of a cake or anything. Don't worry. No, in closing, you know, as I say, retirement marks the end of one chapter in your life, but it definitely starts the beginning of hopefully some new and exciting ones for you as you enjoy your retirement with your beautiful family. We wish you all the best. Lots of fun at the shore and everywhere, everything else you want to do. I'm glad you're keeping the same phone number because I may be bending that ear. Now that I know you're a contractor, too, it might ask me for some help. Know that you're always welcome back here for public comment, if you have any, but please keep it to three minutes. There you go. And with that, I say thank you, everyone, for coming. Please feel free to mill about. We're going to take a short recess so everyone can say hi to Chief and put the meeting on pause for a minute. So, thank you. [applause] For the people who want to attend, Senator Sierra is going to be hosting an event, a reception at Rosa Bianca immediately following this tonight for Chief. Turn the mic on. Welcome back to the Lower Makefield Township Order Supervisors Meeting. I hope everyone enjoyed that wonderful ceremony. We are now up to item number six on the agenda. This is public comment and non-agenda items. So, if you have a public comment on something that doesn't appear on the agenda, please feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and whether or not you're a resident. We try to keep comments down to about three minutes. Follow-ups required, we can do so. So, is there any public comment in the audience? Is there any online? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number seven, which is our consent agenda. So, consent agenda, as we've been doing for the last year or so, several items that appear on the consent agenda. If any member of the board would like any item removed for discussion, please let me know.
Can I just make a quick disclosure? I don't think this inhibits my ability to vote on it. My sister is a former executive to Loga Landin, I think 10 years ago, five or 10 years ago, is not currently associated with them, and she is with another large U.S. bank now. It's not on there.
We'll not exclude you.
Okay, excellent. I'm good to go.
There you go. Any member of the public have any issues with any items on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 5-0. Item number eight, community development. This is our annual update on the floodplain management activities. I believe this satisfies some of our regulatory requirements. So, Mr. Meduski?
Good evening. You are correct. One of our requirements for our participation in the community rating system is that we give an annual progress report towards implementation of the recommendations of the Bucks County Hazard Mitigation Plan. To that effect, I've given everyone a copy of our progress that we've made over the last year and the efforts that we're making to be a more resilient community, to try to get the word out about insurance for people, educate people to come in if they have questions about their status, are they in the floodplain or not, and are grants available, and what we can do to try to make our community better prepared for the next flood that hopefully doesn't come.